I call the meeting to water. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance through the flag of the state of America, Republic of Wichita, Welcome to the September 30, 2024, Acushnet's special fall town meeting. My name is Les Dakin. I'm your Tom Moderator. I've been informed that the warrant has been properly executed with due service accordance with our bylaw. Like to start by introducing the head table, starting with the gentleman closest to me.
Jamie Kelly, town administrator.
David Wonar, board of selectmen.
Bob Hinckley, board of selectmen chairman.
Kevin Gasper, board of selectmen.
Mike Boucher, chairman of the finance committee.
Peter Benoit, finance committee.
Pam Labonte, town clerk.
And now the members of the finance committee seated directly below me, starting with the gentleman closest to the hallway. And now to the right bottom of the stage as you're facing it, members of the school
Jennifer Downing, vice chair of the school committee.
Brian Hood, chairman of the school committee.
John Howcroft, just a member of the school committee.
Melissa Cordera, member of the school committee.
At this time, please join me in a moment of silence for a man who is dedicated over 20 years of service to the town of Acushnet, Bob Pereira, serving on the Acushnet Finance Committee and the Gulf Management. Thank you. Bob passed away suddenly on July 23 of this year. He was 82 years old. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We understand you have very busy lives. Thank you for the privilege of time. And every one of you tonight have the opportunity to question, comment, and modify, ultimately prove or reject each article in this warrant. Your meeting, your pack solid. Your participation is not only encouraged, but is your absolute right. Few housekeeping items. Excuse me. Please note that the center floor, sir, for registered voters in town and department head alone. Non-registered voters, visitors, servers are to be seated at the rear of the center floor and/or the side of the thing. Each registered voter was presented with a pink card tonight on verification of voting status. Those cards will be the only means of voting tonight, raised county. Finally, silence all your cell phones so as not to disturb. Please note, hurt the act that nearest you in the unlikely event after that wait. Restrooms are in the hallway to my right. I will quickly go through what I call the process summary. I won't be reading every article verbatim, but will provide a summary of full text as on the handouts provided to you when entered. Like to speak on an article, line up at the microphone center. Non-residents not be allowed to speak unless they are top head town employees. For a majority of you folks, the registered voters, read or let speak. Recognized by the moderator, clearly state your name, town address, or speaker. You have the absolute right to understand what you are voting on. Articles are written to comply with the law. Full intent of the article not be clear to you as well as others. Everyone here entitled to ask, question any aspect of an article, and we will address every question asked. Procedurally, all questions shall be directed to the moderator. Maintain decorum and efficient use of our time. You are to speak only to the motion at the moment. Rude or disrespectful speech will not be tolerated. Direct conversations between participants will only be allowed if it serves to answer important questions and is deemed to be beneficial to the meeting efficient. All may speak on a motion as many times as they like, but no one may speak twice, and to all who wish to speak, have spoken once. I do reserve the right to limit discussion once we reach the onerous point of repetition. And without objection, I reserve the right to recess at any point. Motions must be made to amend any item which will be voted on, then we need to vote on the article as a whole. Motions to amend must be in writing and signed and dated by the proponent. When an article has multiple line entries, I will read each line item individually. If you wish to discuss any line item, please raise your hand and say "hold" when I read that line. We will return to those line items held when all have been read. You do not need to identify yourself to hold the line item, but prepare to comment on it when we return to it. All right, let's get started. Article 1, payment of prior year's bills. See if the town will raise and appropriate or otherwise provide for a transfer from available funds of the solo of $14,178, pay bills from prior fiscal years, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. The first two unpaid bills, 1 and 2, police department to W.B. Mason for office supplies. Item bill number 1 for $175.13, bill 2, $12.97. Bill number 3, the conservation commission to Conoco engineers for $6,090 of peer review Bill 4, police department to the chief, $7,900 for retro payment for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. This autos, article is traditionally presented for goods and services received in the prior fiscal year, but the bills were received in the current fiscal year. We have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of $14,178.10 paid for the following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal years as set forth in the warrant. Police office supplies, $175.13, police office supplies, $12.97. Conservation commission peer review fees, $6,090. Police retro salary fiscal 23 and 24, $7,900, for a total of $14,178.10.
We'll have a second. Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee voted to recommend passage of Article 1 without opposition.
Okay, discussion, we're going to go to the first held item, which is the conservation commission, uh, bill of $6,090.
Good evening, how are you? My name is James Souza, I live on Meta Poiseau Road. Conservation commission never got to vote on this, never got to approve this. This was something that the agent caught up and got, and it had nothing to do with the conservation.
Anyone that would like to address?
This was a bill from prior years that conservation agent asked to have engineering studies done. Town on the hook to the bill, so it's not coming out of the conservation commission budget, coming out of the article. But we have a duty to pay our bills. One, that was done in prior fiscal year, and when it was unpaid and it came to my office, I put it as part of the article so we could make right for the engineering firm that acted for.
Wasn't a peer review for any site that we know of.
Mr. Moderator, uh, Mr. Souza, regardless, it was called in by the former agent in a former administration with a former chair of the board. Unfortunately, like Mr. Kelly said, we have to pay our bills, whether it should have happened or not. Unfortunately, it is what it is.
All right, young man. Is there any other discussion?
Hey, we already had the regular annual town meeting. We must have not taken all of two and a half and left some on the table. Do we have a, we know how much was left on the table? Because we're about to take another $14,178. Want to know that there's enough there.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, that amount of money is different. Yes, there's enough there. This is different of our estimate when we were at the annual town meeting, but Commonwealth finally gave us when they passed their budget onslaught.
Correct. So how much is on the table? That's what, that's the figure I'm looking for. Is there like $180,000 still sitting on the table that we could have used?
No, it's, uh, 96.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. This article will need a 90% affirmative vote in order to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article 1 passes unanimously. Article 2, interdepartmental transfer of fiscal year 2025 budget. See if the town will transfer from available funds to fund amended amounts in various accounts, be it table attached, that were previously voted in Article 25 of the June 17, 2024 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. From line item 1141, Department of Assessors, to line item 1192, Town Buildings, $9,500. This article will correct expense budgets and reconcile them to expect, expected general fund balances. FY25 budget contains items that require adjustments based on final expense. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend Article 25 of the June 17, 2024 annual town meeting by transferring the sum of $9,500 from account number 1141 assessors to account number 1192 town buildings set forth in the warrant.
Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommended passage of this article unopposed.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. There should be a majority vote to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article 2 passes unanimously. Article 3, fund the annual MS4 engineering costs. That's MS4 stands for the municipal separate stormwater system. See if the town will vote to transfer from the stormwater management MS4 stabilization fund for the cost of services in fiscal year 2024 for compliance with the general permit for discharges from the municipal separate stormwater system, the sum of $47,818, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This stormwater management stabilization fund was created two years ago just for this reason. Rather than expend funds out of the operating budget, the cost for complying with the provisions of the general permit for discharges from the MS4 system can be transferred out of the stormwater management stabilization fund, which is funded from free cash. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote from stormwater management MS4 stabilization fund, the sum of $47,818 for the cost of fiscal year 2024 services, compliance with the general permit for discharges from the municipal separate stormwater system as set forth in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee voted to recommend passage of Article 3 without opposition.
Is there any discussion?
What I'm asking is, where is the report? Something that's publicly given to us or?
The reports filed with the state Commonwealth of Mass on behalf of the town of Acushnet from the Conoco engineers.
Get that from the engineers? Can I get it from the town?
Mr. Moderator.
You can get a copy.
I actually signed, four days gone back, engineers submitted, it's on the federal fiscal year. So we had filed it by today, and I've got a copy of it in my office. Shot by.
Thank you so much.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. This article will require a two-thirds acceptance for passage. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article 3 passes unanimously. Article 4, accept and expend fair share amendment funds. See if the town will vote to accept and expend any fair share amendment funds that may be available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for construction improvements and/or reconstruction of public ways and associated equipment, and to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into contracts relative thereto, and to appropriate said sum or sums in anticipation of reimbursement from the Commonwealth, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Folks, this article enabled the town to accept and expend the funds allocated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of the Fair Share Amendment, also known as the Millionaires Act, on road infrastructure projects. This is similar to an article in the annual town meeting consent agenda, allows the town to expend chapter 90 funds. In future years, this will be included in the annual town meeting consent agenda. We have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 4 is printed in the warrant.
Second. Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommended passage of this article without opposition.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. This will be a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 4? Those opposed? Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 5, amend the charter section 3 dot 1 dot 2 special act charter amendment. See if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to file with the general court a petition for special legislation to amend the town charter to delete section 3 dash 1 dash 2. This section imposes on a former town moderator, town clerk, member of the board of selectmen, school committee, community planning commission, the board of public works, assessors, and any other elected board governed by Massachusetts law, a two-year waiting period for appointment to any appointed paid town position, following the expiration of their respective elected term. And further, to authorize the general court to make changes of form only to the bill without the approval of the board of selectmen, and to authorize the selectmen to approve such changes as are within the public purposes of the petition as follows. Section 1, chapter 3 of the charter of the town of Acushnet is on file in the office of the archivist of the Commonwealth. In accordance with section 12, chapter 43V of the general laws, it's hereby amended by striking out section 3 dash 1 dash 2 in its entirety. Section 2, this act shall take effect on passage, or take any other action relative The current section 3 dot 1 dash 2 restricts elected offices from accepting an appointed paid town position for two years from the expiration of his or her term. This restriction places a constraint on filling vacant positions with competent candidates. Also somewhat redundant that the mass ethics law officially sufficiently restricts public officials from benefiting or participating in matters they dealt with as elected official. We have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, Article 5, home rule petition, amend town charter section 3 dash 1 dash 2. I move Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee voted to recommend passage of Article 5 without opposition.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'm happy to just provide some additional color to this and clarification. The reason why we're advancing this is, you may have seen over the last year or two or three years, we've had a hard time filling some important positions in town, whether it be direct finance, um, plant, town planner, and, you know, we looked at this bylaws somewhat being unnecessary. It was passed many years ago, sort of weaponized to, uh, you know, I don't understand the rationale behind it, but it was, uh, done more of a political ploy. And just looking at what's coming down the pike in municipal government, see, you know, regionalization really taking form, but really, I think, and the board thinks, no better than to have somebody who lives in town, is a taxpayer in town, has served the town, and been publicly vetted as to be able to possibly do a town job on behalf of the taxpayer. So this is what this is. Um, it's to try to get ahead of the game as we're looking at what municipal government will look like in the future. Uh, to have an unnecessary restriction on the book just doesn't make sense. We've always said we want to have as many tools in the toolbox as possible. That's, that's the rationale.
Thank you, Mr. Wonar. Is there any further discussion?
Is, is this going to allow somebody to be an elected official and an employee at the same time?
No, Gary.
Okay. And is this only affect Acushnet because we're removing her from the charter? So somebody in another community can't resign their position and come to us?
If somebody lived in another community, Gary, and they wanted to, like, that wouldn't, that's a separate deal. This would be like, say, for instance, Gary, when you were a selectman, your term was over, you couldn't do anything for two years. Doesn't, doesn't make sense.
No, no, I get you. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? This article will need a majority vote to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article 5 passes a majority with opposition. Article 6, funding the laborers' Department of Public Works collective bargaining agreement that runs from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027. See if the town will vote to approve by funding the necessary cost items contained in the initial memorandum of agreement that amends the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Massachusetts Laborers District Council, Public Employees Local Union 1249 from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027, that town raise and appropriate or otherwise provide for a transfer from available funds, the amount of $19,775, fund the cost of the memorandum of agreement, or take any other action thereon. This will amend the existing collective bargaining agreement to update the current salary grid and provide salary adjustments for future years. Fiscal year 2025, 1%, 2026, 2%, and 2027, 2%. We have a motion.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of $19,775 to fund the cost of the MOA with the Massachusetts Laborers District Council, Public Employees Local Union 1249, amending extended the current collective bargaining agreement as set forth in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommended passage of this article without opposition.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. This will need a majority, simple majority, to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article 6 passes unanimously. Article 7, amend the soil conservation bylaw. See if the town will vote to amend Article 6, soil conservation bylaw, of the general bylaws by deleting section 3A, section 7, which states, "will result in transportation of materials in excess of the federal truck weight limits of 80,000 pounds," or take any other action in relation thereto. There is a lengthy explanation here with regard to number of axles and weight limits, but what, in essence, what this does is it matches the town of Acushnet's requirements to that of the mass Department of Transportation. Town council has recommended that the town conform to Commonwealth regulation. We have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the soil conservation bylaws printed in the warrant.
We have a second. Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee voted to recommend passage of Article 7 without opposition.
Is there any discussion?
Um, the only question I have is like, Lake Street still has weight, right?
Mr. Moderator, every bridge or any culvert that has a weight restriction that's imposed by the state will remain in effect. So if the bridge says you can't go over it because of your truck weight, you can't.
So Lake Street, did it have a sign there?
Good question.
Because there was 10 wheelers going up and down that road the other day, and I was like, man, I know at the parade, my father wasn't even allowed to go down Lake Street with his eight wheeler. And the other day I saw a bunch of trucks, and it was one company, and they were going up and down Lake Street, like, I don't, something we might want to look into?
Definitely worth looking into. Um, now that you brought it up, I honestly never pay attention to cars, uh, so good to know, um, but we can definitely check it out and actually ask what it is.
Fully axled, so that means they're cruising right around 80, 80 to 90,000 pounds.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Mr. Souza.
25 South Main Street. South Main Street is a mess, and you want to add 19,000 pounds. It's ridiculous now. That's crazy. The amount of trucks that are going through there in one day, in an, in an hour, you wouldn't believe how many trucks that I counted. It was ridiculous. It was one within every minute and a half. That's crazy. And you want to put up the weight. I don't care what Massachusetts doing, because they're not taking care of South Main Street anyway. They're not taking care of the holes, cracks, sinking.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So the reason why we're taking the weight limit out of the Soil Conservation Bylaw is because it's discrimination to one company and not to everybody else. So we have large tanker trucks that come into the Town of Acushnet via our town roads, and we can't regulate them. But what we're asking PJ Keating to do is regulate only their trucks and keep them at eighty thousand pounds. It's the recommendation of Town Council to get this bylaw amended.
Right, you want to get it amended, but you don't have enough in writing from PJ Keating that says they're going to stick to that eighty thousand.
Well, again, it comes down to discrimination, ma'am. You can't have one company hauling trucks at a hundred thousand pounds, which the tanker trucks will weigh when they go to fuel stations in our town, and then you tell PJ Keating, the quarry, not to run an eighty-five thousand pound truck down South Main Street.
Not discrimination when they're part of the town. That's part of the agreement with PJ Keating. That's how it would have to be. If you have tankers coming in, that's, they're coming in how often? They're not going back and forth over that road doing more damage, shaking the houses that are around them.
Town Council and myself have already had conversations with PJ Keating. And as you know, there's a lot of outstanding lawsuits between the town and PJ Keating. And this would just be one more legal dispute.
But that's letting them do whatever they want again. It's ridiculous. No, I'm done. This is ridiculous. The amount of trucks that are increased, it's ridiculous. And the weight you want, and now you want to increase the weight. That road can't take it, I'm telling you. Have you noticed how many cracks are in that road now? How many, how many holes are in that road? And they don't take care of it. State don't care. Am I wrong? State doesn't take care of it.
I agree that South Main Street is becoming a major problem for the Town of Acushnet. It is a state-owned road, not a town-owned road, right? We have town-owned roads that are not in good shape as well. The reality of it is, is we can't regulate one business in the Town of Acushnet and let everybody else get away with it. That is a form of discrimination.
That other people that have tankers coming in, that's
Ma'am, ma'am, I believe you've made your point. We're going to put this to a vote. This will take a two-thirds vote for passage. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article seven passes by two-thirds with opposition. Article eight, funding the school roof and, which stands for bond anticipation note, repayment from the Special Capital Expenditure Fund from solar tax revenue, chapter one-ten of the Act of two thousand thirteen. See if the town will vote to transfer from the Special Capital Expenditure Fund, Expenditure Fund from solar tax revenue the sum of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This fund from the solar tax revenue was created in two thousand thirteen to pay for specific capital expenditures, such as a school roof project. Funding for this is created from the solar tax revenue rather than operating budget funds pre-cash. This partial prepayment of the note will reduce future bank interest payments and relieve the town of costs of converting the band to a regular bond borrowing instrument. It's the intention of the Board of Selectmen to continue this practice over the next year or two to retire the bond anticipation note. We'll have a motion.
Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer Special Capital Expenditure Fund, Solar Tax Revenue, chapter one-ten of the Act of two thousand thirteen, sum of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, pay for the partial repayment, capital debt, which is a result of a capital expenditures, capital improvement to the school roof as set forth in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended passage of this article without opposition.
Any discussion?
Moderator, just again, some additional information and clarification. Years ago, when the school department, the school committee came to Board of Selectmen, the problem of the roof, we're able to make a decision without having impact to the taxpayer by tapping into solar revenue fund. It was a decision that was made back in two thousand thirteen, as indicated when Mr. Gasper and me, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, you might have been there as well, where we decided that solar revenue should be boxed off from the general fund because it's a depreciating asset. And while we didn't have any immediate threats at the time, ten years later, we decided to take care of this important project without going back.
Thank you, Mr. Womnauer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. This will take a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of Article eight? Those opposed? Article eight passes unanimously. Article nine, funding the fire department study. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of up to five thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of performing a study of the fire and EMS department in the areas of operations, staffing, and facilities, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This would allow the department to produce a plan to continue to improve operations and create a capital improvement and staffing program. This would be funded from the EMS reserve account, which has a current balance of approximately nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars as of August twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Last year, we accrued seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the fiscal year. We'll have a motion.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the EMS reserve account the sum of five thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of performing a study of the fire EMS department in the areas of operations, staffing, and facilities as set forth in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee voted to recommend passage of Article nine without opposition.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. This needs a majority vote to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article nine passes unanimously. Article ten, Fire Station Number Three renovation. See if the town will vote and raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, borrow, file for, accept, and expend grants and/or matching funds provided by grants or otherwise provide a sum or sums of money not to exceed forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to make repairs to the facility known as Fire Station Number Three, located at sixty Middle Road, including window replacements, scraping and repainting exterior, replacing the generator for the Acushnet Fire and EMS Department, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Again, these renovations would be funded from a transfer from the EMS reserve account, which has a current balance stated earlier of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars as of August twenty-one of this year. And again, last year, we accrued seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in that fiscal year. We'll have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the EMS reserve account the sum of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and/or file for, accept, expend grants and/or matching funds provided by grants for the purpose of reducing the amount needed from said appropriation to make repairs to the facility known as Fire Station Number Three, sixty Middle Road, including window replacements, scraping and repainting the exterior, and replacing the generator, Acushnet Fire and EMS Department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto as set forth in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended passage of this article without opposition.
Any discussion?
Obviously, it's a dollar under fifty thousand.
Excuse me, sir, I know you've been here before, but some people.
Gary Rockliff, seventy-four, McQuaid. So we're looking for forty-nine nine nine. So obviously, fifty thousand is the threshold for something we're doing here. Could somebody explain to me what the, is that going to create a bigger bidding process if we actually went to fifty thousand? I just want to know why we're.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
And the amount is not to exceed forty-nine nine nine nine.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. This would be a simple majority to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article ten passes unanimously. Article eleven, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, borrow, file for, accept, and expend grant or grants and/or matching funds provided by grants or otherwise provide a sum or sums of money not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars to purchase and equip an advanced life support ambulance for the Acushnet Fire EMS Department or take any other action thereto. Our current ambulance is seven years old with a normal useful life of between five and eight years. And there's a two-year backlog from the time of order to the time of delivery. This will put our ambulance toward the outer limits of typical replacement timeline. If we can order the vehicle, it will allow us to remain on schedule for replacing the ambulances in our fleet. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of six hundred thousand dollars and/or file for, accept, and expend and/or matching funds provided by grants for reducing the amount needed for that appropriation, purchase and equip, ant-life support, ALS, ambulance, fire, EMS, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto in that meet this appropriation, the treasurer, approval of the Board of Selectmen, goth rise, borrow under the under in pursuant chapter forty-four, section seven or eight of the general laws, pursuant to any other enabling authority.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee voted to recommend passage of Article eleven without opposition.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gasper.
So if you were here a year or two ago, we did the same thing for an ambulance a year or two ago. Because of the delay in the supply chain, the Board of Selectmen are extremely concerned about both of our ambulances. We should have a new one, hopefully, six to twelve months. I can see my chief in the back giggling right now. But anyways, we're extremely concerned about the supply chain when it comes to emergency personnel. So we're asking to put this on there. It's from the EMS reserve receipt account and other funding sources that we can come up with. I don't know if most of you know this, but the Acushnet Fire and EMS Department is roughly fifty-five percent self-sufficient. That's more than what we could say about a lot of different boards and committees, right? So kudos to our fire and EMS, our call guys out there that are serving the public every day. We just don't want to put the public's safety at risk. So we're just asking this so that we can put a purchase order in. And hopefully, in two years, we'll actually get delivery of this ambulance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gasper. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. This will take a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of Article eleven? Those opposed? Article eleven passes unanimously. Article twelve, authorization for extended school transportation contract. See if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a three-year contract with two one-year options, fencing on July one, two thousand twenty-four, with a qualified vendor for the provision of bus transportation for students within grades kindergarten through eight attending Acushnet Public Schools in the Town of Acushnet and contracted sending high schools. Subject to the Select Board's determination that the contract is in the best interest of the town and subject annually to town meeting approval for funding for these services or take any other action relative thereto. This would allow the school to exercise options in contracts, contract years four and five, in order to lock in favorable pricing. Pricing between option years three and four and four and five represents a zero percent increase on all buses and trip. We'll have a motion.
We don't move that the vote to two-year, to one-year, five thousand, qualified vendor kindergarten, grade eight, Acushnet contract, sending high school students subject to the Select Board's annually to town meeting approval for funding for these services as set forth in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended passage of this article without opposition.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. This will require a majority vote to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article twelve passes majority with opposition. Article thirteen, transfer of funds from the School Special Education Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote under the provisions of the general laws of Massachusetts, chapter forty, section thirteen E, or any amendments thereto, transfer of funds from the School Special Education Reserve Fund to the FY twenty-five or Acushnet School Department to be utilized to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education and recovery high school programs, out of district tuition, transportation, or take any other action relative thereto. This would allow the town to transfer funds from the Special Education Reserve Fund to the FY twenty-five Acushnet School Department budget, pay without further appropriation, as I mentioned before, unanticipated or unbudgeted cost of special education, recovery high school programs, out of district tuition, transportation, take any other action relative thereto. Currently, there's a deficit of hundred eighty-six thousand twenty-six dollars, unanticipated, unbudgeted cost that would need to be funded for FY twenty-five Acushnet School Department budget hole. The current balance of School Special Education Reserve Fund, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. We'll have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote under the provisions of the general laws of Massachusetts, chapter forty, section thirteen E, or any amendments thereto to transfer funds from the School Special Education Reserve Fund, the Reserve Fund, to the fiscal year twenty-five Acushnet School Department, utilized to pay without further appropriation, unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education, recovery, high school programs, out of district tuition, transportation, as set forth in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee voted to recommend passage of Article thirteen without opposition.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. This needs thirds approval to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article thirteen passes by two-thirds with opposition. Yes.
Ron Hood, Reservoir Road, School Committee. So before the next articles, I just wanted to say a few words. I wanted to speak to the significance of the next four articles and the process that's been undertaken. Probably most folks here realize that since the summer of two thousand twenty-three, the district's been dealing with some significant air quality issues in the elementary school. Many of these issues are being solved with short-term, non-sustainable, or cost-efficient solutions. And so accordingly, the school and the district began an investment-grade audit in the summer of two thousand twenty-four, which is a comprehensive study of the current conditions of the school buildings with the the current conditions of the school buildings, with the end goal to be to implement a number of facility improvements that will improve the learning environment and also address the air quality concerns on a long. Because of the timeline of both the audit and the date of this meeting, the internal audit, or the investment-grade audit, I should say, is not yet complete. So to ensure that the school district, the school committee is being responsible and accountable, before we move these articles forward, we want to make sure that we can address all of the questions for all of the stakeholders here, including the residents, the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee. So at this time, and I will present the motion here in a minute, I do want to say, though, that the school committee supports this project 100%. And however, we are not fully ready, and so we need some more time to educate folks so that we can all make the right decision together moving forward. So I will make a motion to move that Article 14, Article 15, Article 16, and Article 17 be referred to the Finance Committee for further study, and that we report to the next town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A motion's been made. Is there a second? Second. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee, be willing to accept the responsibility for the school department?
Yes, we will.
Is there any discussion? This will take a majority vote. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of moving Articles 14, 15, 16, and 17 to the Finance Committee and a report to us on next spring's annual meeting. I'm sorry. All those in favor again, please? Those opposed? Articles 14, 15, 16, and 17 referred to the Finance Committee for study and report back to us the next annual meeting in the spring.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the special town meeting be dissolved.
Second. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, dissolution of meeting. Those opposed? Meeting dissolved.